This is a regular meeting, Town North Wilkes-Barre Board of Commissioners now in session. Please rise. Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, help us to always do your will, do what's best for the citizens of North Wilkes-Barre. Please lead, guide, and direct us. We ask this in Jesus, your son's name. Amen. Please face the light. Chief Thornburg, would you please lead us in the pledge? Please be seated. Section four additions and deletions to the agenda. Ms. Dutch, I believe you do have an addition.
Yes, we need to add item D1 as a town street closure. And this is for a town-sponsored event on 10th Street Friday from three to 10:00 p.m.
Okay.
D1.
Okay. Did everyone get a chance to read through that? It's pretty much boilerplate. John Roselli is asking for a closure for a few hours on that day. Speak Italian festival, maybe it's a block up. So there's under routine business, we can pass all these, accept them all in one motion. Would need a motion, please.
All right, so, Mr. Mayor, I believe we need approval of the agenda first. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the agenda with the change that was stated. But I have one clarification. Your D1 is under the routine business or prior to the public here?
It'll be as far as your consent agenda.
I want to make a clarification. I make a motion that we accept the agenda as stated with the change D1 to the consent agenda.
All those in favor? I'm sorry, second please. Thank you, Ms. Palmer. All right. All those in favor? Do I need to read the, do I need to roll call this?
I believe so, more.
Okay, Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons? Ms. Day? Mr. Hall? Mr. Church? Okay, motion carries. So I need, I need, that includes approval of the agenda, is that correct? And the addition both, we need to go through this again.
Mr. Mayor, we're good.
We're good, okay. Next section will be the general public comment period. Ms. Dutch, would anybody sign up?
I've got Peter Bergen for the budget hearing, so not under, that'll be at the public hearing.
Okay, all right. That'll bring us to section eight, Town Manager's Report. Mrs. Dutch, you have some comments, please.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, we need to do the, I mean, we need a motion for the consent for the routine business. So
That's what I had asked you.
I make a motion that we accept the routine business as stated.
Thank you. All those in favor, Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Ms. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Paul? Mr. Church?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now, section eight. Ms. Dutch, you have some comments, please.
Yes, there are just a few updates for the board. We will have a controlled burn this Saturday starting at seven a.m. at 2:11 Sparta Road. As the Blair property, I think she discussed it with us at the last meeting. We received word that we're, we are going to be getting a grant from DEQ for $50,000 for a feasibility study, and once we get more information, I'll bring one to you all.
Okay.
And then the last thing is, hopefully either today or tomorrow, we will be having a water pump working at our waste or water treatment plant. And we will still have to be renting one as a backup until we get the parts for the secondary pump. We're ma, we're making it happen, so. So some good news.
Then grant from DEQ for the maintenance?
No, this is different. This is a feasibility study, and I've got to get caught up to speed on it. Water merger, regionalization feasibility study, so we'll find out more and bring it to you, but that's good news. That's all I have. Danny?
I do not have a report, thank you.
Any questions for Mrs. Dutch, please? Anyone? Okay, then, public hearing for fiscal year 2022, 2023, general fund and water sewer fund budget is now open. And Ms. Dutch, you had a Peter
Bergen.
Asked, yeah, he'd welcome to come forward and speak, please.
Say hello, everybody?
Yeah.
All right. Hey, y'all, my name is Peter Berg. I know I've shared with the mayor a few times. Said hello to some union passing the candidate for since that's over last year. I moved here about two years ago. Lived off 268 and I've read, read some of the comments on the proposed budget. Just wanted to offer a little bit of perspective. I know, again, I've lived in town, well, in town for about a year and a half now. Glad to be a resident in North Wilkes-Barre. It's a beautiful part of the country. I'm from Michigan originally. And there are two things that I tell people when they ask what it's like living in North Wilkes-Barre. I tell people trash is only $10 a month, and that's awesome. And if I have extra stuff, the town will bring it up. And for me, honestly, those are the two benefits that I have living in the town of North Wilkes-Barre. There, there are really no other town services that I necessarily use, have reason to use, other than driving on the roads that same roads I'd probably drive on if I lived mile out and didn't pay the extra taxes. But I just want to bring the perspective, you all were elected to serve the town and put the best, best interests of the town first. But I just want to ask you all to think back to prior to your service on the board as a town resident. If you were to go and to read in the paper about the proposed fee changes, and I know many of them are modest. Many of these are not outrageous, doubling, tripling things and things like that. There's arguments that, well, we should line up with the town, we should line up with Wilkes-Barre, et cetera, et cetera. But as a resident, reading those in the paper with everything else that's going on right now, with gas prices going up, which obviously affects the town and its staffing and management as well. It's, it's another cost, and it might only be $2 a month for garbage. And then, you know, the, the 2% increase, I think, was for water and various other things. But I can also tell you that as a Wilkes County resident, it made me pretty happy to read down the list of fee changes and fee hikes that the Wilkes County Commissioner said net. And that was just a little bit of encouraging, you know what, those folks, I feel like they have my best interests that are in that. And so, again, you guys have a budget, you have town staff to think about, and the cost of living for them and the costs of doing business as the town. And so you're not just thinking about this as residents, and I certainly understand that. But in representing the town, you are representing residents, and so I just ask you to keep that in mind as you consider this. And I would love to be able to tell people that after this budget approved is approved, that my trash is only $10. So thank y'all very much.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, Ms. Dutch?
Let's see, not signed up, no sir.
Okay. Anything from the board? Okay. We'll continue then. Consideration of old business, the Smoot Park master plan, Mrs. Dutch.
Mr. Mayor, we need, we, we, you need to close the
Oh, I'm sorry, I do.
And then we need to have it on the budget, please.
Did you need to close? I'm sorry, I missed that last part. Please repeat.
We need to close the, the public session, and then we need to call for a vote to pass the budget.
Thank you. The public hearing regarding the general fund and water sewage fund budget is now closed. And I'll need a motion, please, to pass the budget.
Danny needs to say something. We have to do it a little bit different this time.
Yeah, yeah, we have, we, as we discussed at the last meeting, we have a new requirement courtesy of Senate Bill 473, where we need to consider the nonprofit requests that are in the budget separately from the general budget. I think we can take a vote on the general budget. But then we need to address the nonprofit charitable request separately because I believe some of the board members are also board members for these various organizations. And I'll remind everybody before we get into that part, it's not that you're associated with or volunteer with a nonprofit. You're either a director, an officer, or a designated board member. That's the only requirement for a board member here to refuse himself or herself from the vote on the appropriations for the nonprofits. What I would suggest is entertain a motion to approve the budget and then separately a motion to entertain the appropriations that are made to the nonprofit.
I have a question or two about the fee schedule, if you don't. Normally, we vote on the fee schedule, sometimes do budget. But I just need to clarify, you know, we talked about the out-of-town rates. On the fee schedule here, it's, I think, one and a half percent, but the outside city limit rates on the note, it says four times the normal rate. I wasn't sure if it came with an exact agreement, what you want to.
Kind of, I believe we called, I think we were just doing the four time across the board, all rates.
Outside city.
And then, because I think we also called for the public hearing on that for the June 30th meeting. So, but I, I think we just decided that the in-town rate, and then anything that is out of town was the four-time rate, four times the in-town rate.
Right.
Just across the board.
Well, I do have that note on here, but the actual figures on the fee schedule is not accurate for four times, so I will update those
Right.
before we publish the
There were a couple discrepancies in that chart last time we got to this.
Yeah, so I will correct those. I just want to make sure four times was the correct amount.
That's how I remember it, was four times. Okay, so we'll entertain a motion for acceptance of the budget except for the nonprofit requests. Have a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, do we accept the general fund and city water fund budgets for the upcoming fiscal year excluding the allocation for the nonprofits?
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Got a second, please? Thank you very much. Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
All those in favor, Mr. Palmer? I, I can't see, I have to shout out.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Ms. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hall? Mr. Church? Okay, Mr. Church, thank you. Motion carries. Hey, Danny, I want to do this.
Yes.
Do we have to go nonprofit request? Okay, so I guess we'll have to do take, we just can take a vote on all these, I believe there's about 12. So the first one is Wilkes A.D.A.
Yeah.
Okay, and okay, 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 all right. Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Danny, we need to do these as each is separate entities?
Yes.
And it was, yeah, I'm sorry, folks, this will take a while, but Mr. Parsons?
I beg your pardon?
I say, we're, I guess we're going to go ahead and vote on these. We have to take
I think Danny said we need to do these individually, so I'll make a motion to accept the budget request for Wilkes A.D.A.
Do we need a motion for each one, or can we just vote on each one?
I think we have to have a motion for each one to give board members the opportunity, if they have to, to recuse themselves.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. Okay, so, Mr. Parsons, I have him. Thank you, have a second, please.
Mr. Palmer, Mr. Palmer, a second, did I? Yes.
Okay, thank you all. Okay, then all those in favor, Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Ms. Day?
Yes.
And Mr., and Mr. Church?
Yes.
Mr. Church?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The I think it is for the Wilkes Art Gallery, so I'm going to go and get Mr. Mr. Paul.
He has, he has an argument.
Yeah.
Mr. Hall on that board, too? Okay.
They need to expedite this situation. Can we just find out, because it's like Andrew said, that he's on the Wilkes Art Gallery board and the EDC board. I'm on none of these boards. Andrew, are you on any of these boards?
No, I'm not.
Bert, do you have any other boards that you're on in this one?
I'm on the
All right, so, let me ask you a question, since there's only a conflict commissioner between the gallery, EDC, and the Wilkes Community College. Can I make a single motion for these other ones so that we can expedite this process?
Yes, I think we can make a separate motion for the two boards that Mr. Commissioner Palmer's involved in, approve those, and then have him come back in, approve the rest, Commissioner Hall, and refuse himself the community college as it requires.
All right, so what I want to do is just go ahead and read these ones if there are no conflicts?
Yes.
Or do we need, do we need all commissioners in here for those?
I would.
All right, so I make a motion that we accept the budget request for the Wilkes Art Gallery and the Wilkes Economic Development, Development Corporation?
A second, please?
A second.
Thank you. Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Ms. Day?
Aye.
Mr. Church?
Aye.
Mr. Hall? Thank you. Motion carries. Go ahead and have the other. Get Andrew back, please. I'll need a motion then to approve the remaining items, remaining agencies.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, we're making a motion to accept the budget request for Wilkes Community College.
Thank you very much. All those in favor, Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Ms. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Church?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Someone else like to make the last motion?
I think Bert is on the Wilkes Developmental Base School.
Yes.
And we did A.D.A.
Oh, I thought so.
Yeah, he left. He left for it. I know that he did, we did A.D.A. is what he left for.
So now he needs to do one more Wilkes Developmental Base School, and he can vote on A.D.A.
We have a jar, you'll ain't have any, but
Yeah.
Okay, good catch, good catch.
Thank you.
All right, I make a motion that we accept the budget request and approval for Wilkes Developmental State.
Second, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Ms. Day?
Yes.
And Mr. Church?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
And Bert, just a second.
Bring Bert back for the remaining, is that correct? Okay, now I think I've got it right. I need a motion to accept the remaining nonprofit requests for the remaining agencies.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I make a vote in, that we accept the budget requests for Wilkes County Library, Yackin River, Greenway, Wilkes Rescue Squad, Wilkes County Crime Stoppers, Wilkes Playmakers, Safe Spot Child, Advent Kids Seat Center, sorry about that, guys, and Wilkes Letters.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Got a second, please?
A second.
Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Ms. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hall? This, this church? Thank you. Motion carries. Continue with consideration of old business, the Smoot Park master plan. Mrs. Dutch, please.
Sir, let me share this on the screen real quick. Not if you can see it or not.
Yep.
Okay. A few months ago, if you remember, we were awarded a grant from the Wilkes Medical Center Foundation to do a master plan, ultimate part. Part of that was to take that plan and apply for their grant application that was due May 17. So staff has worked very hard on this, and I want to bring it before you, as Mary Elizabeth has contributed a good amount of her time as our N.C. fellow. And wanted to get this in front of you so we could start the discussions, answer any questions, and then eventually bring this for a public hearing and adoption. This will help us not only have a vision for Smoot Park in our future, but we will also have this as a document to apply for more grants. This gives us a feather in our cap for part of AFD, all those different state agency grants. And like I mentioned, it gives us a plan for how we're going to do improvements at the park. You know, fiscally, there were several courses in the year, several years here, which are some major big improvements. I've got Nelson here off this night. I won't go through it page by page, but wanted to get in front of you and give Mary Elizabeth an opportunity also to present anything that she had in mind for it. But we've got a lot of people to thank. I'll just run through like a part of it really quickly. Under the table of contents, we've got a good amount, everything for demographics, to our site plans, to our survey results. It's, it's very long, but it's got a lot of really good resources and data that we're going to need all into one document. And let me get that first. The one thing I do want to bring to your attention is the phasing plan. Mary Elizabeth worked on the site plans to show, you know, current conditions. Our phase one, you know, we've got the addition of the inclusion of playground with grant funding. Let's see, she's got listed out here too, about relocating the volleyball court, paying the picnic shelters. So we've got a few different projects in mind for each phase. We have re, we did change a few things with the open field, open space multi-use field in the back where the basketball courts are, reserving two, based on our conversations with staff. Felt right now, we'll just keep two basketball courts, and then maybe do like a soccer field or a whole thing used back there. Because two of the courts are in pretty bad shape, so. Phase three, we started looking at improving the river access. That's also part of the River District Plan. We want to make sure that our current river access at Smoot Park is adequate, and it's going to be, you know, we're going to have more people using it, so we need to make improvements so those people can access the river safely and get to it. The last thing is, in the final phase, you know, that's, that's everything, parking, landscaping, finishing touches. So multi-year phasing here, but this gives us a direction for our park. Do you have anything you would like to add?
Yeah. Speak clearly. All of these things outlined have been informed from feedback from the community, feedback from y'all, and the planning documents and ideas brought forth from Withers, Ravenel, the consultant. And what's really important to stress about this plan is that even though we have it broken down into phases, nothing is set in stone. This is more of a document to assist us with prioritizing in what order to do things, what it may look like. For example, like the skate park, skate park might be expanded in a different direction. Or we might add a different remedy because no one can really predict 20 years out, and that's why we want to pare this down into phases because it is a transformational, generational project, and we want to break it down to chunks that we can actually get it done.
I'm sorry, ladies, finish?
Yes, I said, do you have any questions? We'll bring this back. I'll bring this back with Nelson to you all to do a public hearing, get public input, and adopt it at a later date, but I wanted to show you the progress we've made with the grants and where we're at right now with Smoot Park.
Great, okay. Thank you, ladies. If there's nothing else, move, we'll move to a traffic calming policy briefing, and that, I believe, is Ms. Campbell?
Our favorite topic. This is another multi, multiple staff members, multiple departments, and Mary Elizabeth has spearheaded this, and so a lot of her time resources. I wanted to show you what we have put together.
All right, so essentially, the final outcome of the work I've done on traffic calming is to come up with this set of policy recommendations and guidelines in order to improve the efficiency at which staff respond to, catalog, and prioritize traffic calming requests. Because it's not sustainable for us to jump immediately at every request, but we also want to be responsive to the public. So in this policy, I set forth actually, if you want to go to the flow chart. Kind of this flow process of someone submits a traffic calming request, either through a hard copy form or online, and this is what a lot of municipalities have. And if those streets are eligible for review, so if they're town maintained, a staff member can let them know that, all right, this is like something the town could potentially do something about, or this is N.C. DOT maintained, we don't have any authority over it. And that's a very, that's like a five-digit email that will take up a lot of staff time. And that's a very, that's like a five second email that won't take up a lot of staff time. And so essentially then we have these criteria that projects must meet in order to qualify for a actual traffic calming study. So we have these prior prioritization criteria. We have two options on the tables and essentially, a project needs to score a certain number of points in order to be considered eligible for traffic calming and things like that, or if it's near daycare or if there's a lot of speeding going on. And most of these criteria are things that we don't need to go out to the fields to figure out. Like just looking at this, most of these things I could figure out from GIS. This is maybe stuff that the planner could do. I don't think it's gonna take up a lot of staff time. And that's, that's really the, the goal of this is that we improve the efficiency with which we can catalog and respond to traffic calming, but also make sure that the public feels heard. And so in your packet, I have two different examples of the scoring criteria. There's option one and option two. And A and B show examples of scoring. Mass Street and Sixth Street according to both of those criteria tables. And this doesn't need to be adopted for actions that work on this. It's more of a set of guidelines and me wrapping up my traffic calming project. Yeah, so this is, like I mentioned, this gives staff guidance on how to rank and score these criteria versus out there all trying to make heads or tails of, is there speeding? Is this happening? So it gives us a very clear path of how to address issues based on, essentially, she's pulled different, some different municipalities, from the National Highway Administration. So a lot of data was pulled and put into this, so we would actually have a very strict format to follow. That is also transparent to the public for how we're scoring, determining if there is a traffic issue on these roads. And they're only on town main street roads too. But we would like to hear if you guys had any comments, feedback? If you liked one thing, hated one thing, you tell us.
I have something that still on the larger speed bump coming down Sixth Street.
Right.
At one point, there was a rug halfway over it. I think somebody thought they might, if it's their car, they could have run gone underneath it. It was gone later on. But the scrape was there, there's still scrapes there. And so I've had different people mentioning it, I think, maybe just to look at their largest one one more time. Is it the size it needs to be?
This up at the top one. Okay, so this, they did a cruise to go up, grind it down. Didn't make that without it, but.
Yeah, I, I agree, Miss Day. I've heard the same thing and then I, so I drove them all again. That top one is, is, is higher than the other two and then they did a nice job when they milled the head, but it, it can stand well, another treatment, yeah, a little more.
Well, that's something we can look into. Did you guys have any thoughts on the policy?
This kind of, I think of the policy as kind of phase one of addressing traffic calming. And so phase two is what you're talking about. It's like, is this the right, do we need to keep up, do we need to stop side? And I can't figure that out. I tried my best to be a traffic engineer. That's just simply not what I am. And that's something that we would either contract out with and that's, that's beyond my scope. I can't tell. But what I can do is help figure out how we respond to requests of, I need traffic calming or this is a problem here. And so the policy is looking at addressing the locations.
I think this system has the ability to create an equitable evaluation for the bridge streets. So, I mean, I, I'm sure it needs a little fine tuning and that is something that can be addressed within the next reasonable short period of time. So I would like to take a, just a quick personal note here and tell you what great assistance you have been to North Wilkesboro and the time and effort that you have taken and put into tasks that may not have been as greatly admired as they should have been. But your energies and your insight and just shows me that I believe your career, successful career is just about to start. So from this chair, I thank you for all that you've done this last year and wish you all the best in your future endeavors.
Thank you. Thanks, Emily. Thank you.
I'd like to echo, Mr. Horst, I think you did an outstanding job. And you've been very professional.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to chime in too, please, just because Ms. Campbell's office is just right down the hall from mine. I got to see her often. She was always in there working. She was one of the first ones to come, one of the last to leave. She has a great work ethic. Her quality of work, in my opinion, has been exemplary. I'll miss her and I thoroughly enjoyed her company, so thanks once again from me.
I'll be here on the thirtieth too, so you'll see.
Oh, good. We'll get to do this again.
We heard you might not be here on the thirtieth.
Yeah. Okay, okay. So if, if anything else, any further questions on traffic calm? Mr. Hall.
This has nothing to do with Mary Elizabeth. She's, she's done a fantastic job, okay? But all I'm getting is negative comments from people about this speed bump stuff. And I've had people tell me, well, I'm not coming back into town anymore. That's the mess they're gonna put up. And I'm going, well, you know, I don't know what to do. I don't know what the solution is. But you've got a lot of people who are aggravated about that and you've got to think twice before we add anymore because we don't want people thinking we don't want them downtown. We need them downtown. We need to encourage them. And I'm not sure how much these speed bumps are encouraging people. I know I'm taking a different route now. I won't go up Sixth Street.
Martha, personally, I agree with you one hundred percent.
But I'm not fussing at her at all.
No, no, we understand.
But you all need to take into consideration that a lot of people hate those third speed bumps and they are not coming in town. Now, what the solution is, I told you what the solution is. They have basketballs, cobblestones underneath. They'll stop, like I'm just saying, I mean, you know. But that stops, that stop sign at top Sixth Street Hill, I, I'm fussing every time I come to it.
Well, you know, Bert and I was in Raleigh, Winchestry, and the speed bumps are all over town. They're horrible. You take ours.
I have noticed Raleigh's different situation.
But we definitely need to, to take that top speed bump down. The rest of y'all, if you, if you find half them, you go into fast.
So the new term out is, is traffic calming. Last year it was low hanging fruit. I don't want it to be next year. But we got to thank you folks. Excuse me, I shouldn't interrupt, but.
I mean, addressing the biggest speed bump, I think we'll make a lot of people happy.
I've got one comment. So the two issues that we've had to deal with are the volume of traffic and speeding. And one thing that I think our board needs to discuss and maybe have an opinion on is that they talked about the bypass to two sixty-eight, four twenty-one. I think we need to all speak and have a decision on that. If it's something we wanted to support, I think we should do a resolution and take it NC DOT. Because I feel like, well, there are some, it needs to be discussed and it can be negative. I feel like that could address a lot of the volume that we have and.
It's already in the DOT. It's in the DOT, but.
It's, it's in the queue, but it's not funded yet. And I think that we passed a resolution saying if we supported it, I think it might be beneficial. I'm just gonna toss it out there because I think more than all these other things we're doing, something like that might actually address this thing. Or what, what the studies we've done, supposed to do, I guess.
What are we gonna do when we get all that block forty-six? What are we gonna do when the speedway comes back and you have all those venues? We need people here in town spending money.
And my fear is what's gonna happen is will people just gravitate right around North Wilkesboro? Whereas now they are on our main street and they're on our streets and they're shopping and walking on the streets. And will that bypass take, take a lot of business and a lot of feet on the sidewalk?
It, then we, 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 a bypass will take all the traffic from downtown. If we can take the trucks from downtown, I'd be happy. That's the biggest problem we got. We had a truck on the street this morning, driver slipped it last night. Police asked us to believe.
I think our town needs to be focused on things that will bring people downtown. And I don't, I don't agree that the bypass would necessarily take people downtown. I understand the concern, but that's just my.
Mark, somebody should go up on Joe Woody's desk and tell them to fix this stupid intersection down here, Domino's. Take that curb off that parking lot so the trucks can make that turn in and out and make the mail truck go down and use the loop and come up C Street instead of coming down Main. It's not rocket science. That intersection, that parking lot juts out too far. And I talked to Nick about it some months ago and he went, huh? And I said, yeah, I'm sorry, but they need to take the corner of your parking lot off so the trucks can come in and out of that intersection. It's a dumb intersection.
Okay, all right, just, just do this. I, I don't want to get into that huge can of worms again, but Martha, I've heard you bring this before. We spoke about this before and Miss Des, if you would please make a note, we'll get it on the agenda and pursue this further. I do know this, I live, well, you know, I live in those condos over there. I'm on Sixth Street probably more than anyone. And it, you know, we, we caught a lot of grief when we didn't have them. Now we're catching grief because we do have them. And we also know that some people, you're, you're not gonna keep them happy no matter what. However, those speed bumps are substantial. I drive a pickup. I can be in the, you know, the low twenties and please, if you can remember, take your foot off the brake and your hand off the wheel just for a moment when you hit the bump. It may, does make a big difference no matter what you're driving. I believe the top one is a candidate for milling again, possibly the medium one. The bottom one is, is tolerable. That's just my opinion. But even though you mill them down again, there's still gonna be that same group of people who are gonna raise Cain about it. So that's, we're gonna have to live with the discomfort of having the bumps or the discomfort of the people, other group of, being so upset about the speeding, the amount of traffic. You're never gonna get it finished, but I think, I don't like them, but I think that we don't have the police force and the money to have them out there patrolling twenty-four seven, which would keep some people happy, but it would wreck the budget. So if everyone's okay with this, including Mrs. Nichols, we'll, we'll end it here if we can. Someone has something else that is burning to say and we'll put this on an agenda for a following meetings. Everyone okay with that? Okay, because I do agree that, that intersection does need some work, but it's gonna be expensive. So we'll have to, you know, fill my game promises we can't. We need move to urgent issues and I believe, do fencing at the park maybe, or maybe not.
You broke up, you said emerging issues. Okay, Mark, we broke up a little bit. Are we at emerging issues now?
I did.
You can try to turn your video.
I can hear her now. Yeah, if no one has anything else, go on, Palmer had something? Sorry, guys.
Two things. One, uh, here, they put the new fence up at the tennis courts to separate the new basketball courts. And there's a few small things wrong with the pre-existing fence here or there. Do you have any pictures? I took some pictures to show y'all, but while we have them down there doing that, I think we ought to fix that and see if staff can go fix it. It's just little things, like you see how the poles through the fence and not in the hole. I mean, I almost think I could fix it. But just while we're on that project, let's go ahead and get that right.
Oh, yeah.
My suggestion would be, there's probably four or five little things like that. My suggestion would be to see if staff could do it first to minimize our costs. And if not, maybe have the contractor look at it, look at it, but the number that he gave us was thirty-three hundred dollars, which I think is too much, because something is so small.
We're gonna pass out a quote real quick for everybody.
What the fence is. He said that would repair everything. Do you think it needs to be repaired? Well, it looked better, but it's also probably functional, be more structural and sound. But I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention while they're down there working.
So, Tommy, if we, if we decided, if we decided to, because we already cut this project the last time we met because I think we decided to put the ten-foot separated fence. Right. And so that kicked, that kicked the cost of this project out. And I think we had to make some budget, we're gonna have to make some budget adjustments from the contingency, is that what I remember?
Some of it, some of it we took since the project's not gonna be finished or completed before June thirtieth. One of the budget amendments is moving that entire project out of Nelson's budget, parts and wreck, into its own, into the recreation improvements capital project ordinance. So that way, I think we're already moving a hundred thousand for the match for the first grant. And we, so we're moving this entire budget there, so it'll be about a hundred and fifty-five thousand. Knowing that won't be enough, but I don't think we'll use the fifty-five thousand before July one. So we'll come back after July one and do a budget amendment if we need to move more money into that project to do everything we need to do there.
So if we, so Nelson, are you confident that thirty-seven hundred and fifty would address all of the concerns that Andrew has and took pictures up?
Yes.
Would David, could staff, could you justify the staff's doing that in-house? You know, is it a trade-off, you know, because it would take about thirty-seven hundred and fifty dollars worth of staff time if they could be doing their normal tasks? But what I'm saying is, is it more cost effective to let a professional fix company fix it? Or have us fix, our guys fix?
We can go take a look at it and we can fix what we can maybe. You know, we're not chance with, by no means. Some of the stuff we still may have to get them to do, but putting the pole back in the hole and stuff like that, that should be a problem. But we can take a look at it and see.
I mean, my thing is, we're already spending forty grand plus, almost fifty grand plus to, to do what we're doing. It's one of those things where I'm not a big, won't spend money, but in the grand scheme of things, thirty-seven fifty is, would you just consider spending it to get it done right?
And they've got the tools to do it.
I mean, when you look at it, it looks, I thought to myself, hey, I can bring my ladder and fix this. But you may get your ladder down there and find out, oh, this is separated because the ground is settled and these poles are further apart. Right. So.
They do this every day.
Yeah.
So I mean, from the other end of the dais, what do you guys think?
If this guy here is doing the fixing, Bert knows in person here, let us go talk to him. Let me and Bert go talk to him. See if we can get him to do it cheaper and more efficient. To me, that's a pretty good change. Just fix the fence and resurface to tennis courts.
It is, it is a lot of money, but I agree that, you know, if you're gonna do, let's do it right. Cosmetics do mean a lot. The pictures, the pictures look pretty bad. So let's tell you what we could do is, Bert, if I. So let's tell you what we could do is, Bert, if you and Otis know that gentleman can have a word, and maybe if David Webb and Mr. Palmer, if we get together and look at the pictures and maybe you can take a ride down there next week. And let's go ahead and do it right, because the optics are bad with just a few little pictures. It is, it needs to be done and done right.
So Mary, could we just go ahead and, and, and say that we're going to, because again, I think we would have to make some kind of motion about this, correct?
Well, we've, we've got money to do the actual project already there. And I don't think we'll use it before June thirty. So I think after July one, once we get everything done and know exactly how much it's going to cost, we'll just do a budget amendment to increase the budget.
So can, but on the June thirtieth meeting, can we have a decision that we know exactly whether we're going to spend this money? Where gentlemen down here at this end, we're able to negotiate a better deal for the town? You know, just something so we can have some kind of finalization as to what we are actually doing by June thirty?
Yes.
Yeah, why not?
When they get their instructor doing their work, we'll know then.
Yeah, the project's going to be in its own project, the budget's going to move out of the current year budget into its own project. So June thirty won't apply for this project anymore.
It could be the middle of July before we get a final figure.
But I thought we already had a final figure for what they were doing, this would be just in addition to.
Yeah. There is no room, I read. I think the additional basketball court was around twelve thousand more. Then what their regiment, everything was, but then this would be thirty-seven hundred more on top of that, unless you get it.
There is, in our minutes in your packet, May twenty-six, I have X was the original budget and the minute, if you want to look at those numbers. It looks like the final cost is going to be fifty-eight, six hundred and sixty-eight, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars, and that includes that ten-foot fence. That's the world, that's the price tag we're at right now.
Fifty-eight thousand?
Six hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
And that's the cost of that. We added an extra backing off, maybe four, two more goals.
Yeah, we'll bring it back to the, on the thirtieth, if that works.
Mr. Mayor, can I move on now?
Yes, please do, sorry, it's making notes.
So this may kind of be Robbie and Mike's major input, but I know that we don't do the schools. I know it's a county thing, but with the recent situation with the school shooting in Texas, I think that we need to look at what we can do to strengthen the safety of the schools in our district, CC right, North Wilkesboro. I don't know if there's companies that can come in and do a study, evaluate, I don't know if that's something the police department could do. It always seems like this, you think to yourself, you see something like that, maybe it couldn't happen here. But I'm here to tell you, it can happen anywhere. And I think if there's anything we can do to help keep the kids safe at those schools, I think we're obligated to do it. And I don't even know what that means, I just wanted to start a discussion. I think that it would seem to me there's things that could be done that might fortify those schools, so to speak. Robbie, do you have any thoughts on that? That's kind of, I kind of think about it, but. As far as the actual schools, like I've seen, I'm just going, I'm not an expert. I'm just going to have what I've seen on TV, where people talk about, you know, stronger doors, different things like that. I mean, have they done stuff like that for our schools here already?
We, we've got plans in place, I'm, I'm not going to discuss them.
I, I support a, have a discussion looking into that, because if something happens and there's things we could have done, did do, and I'm not directing this, you, I'm talking about this actual facility. I feel like that people in office, they have a, they, they have a responsibility to, to look into that now. And that's my statement.
I agree. Anything else, Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, I guess I, just to finalize that, I'm, I'm saying, is there anything we can do that might prevent someone that has bad intentions from getting in there in the first place? That's the kind of thing I think we should be looking into, and that's it. I appreciate your time.
Access, accessibility, right, well put. Anyone else have anything on the emerging issues? Okay, hearing nothing. We will have a closed session tonight, and Mr. Parsons, I'll need a motion, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, they would go into closed session to conduct, a closed session according to GS one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven, subsection A, subsection six, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment of an individual public officer.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons, may I have a second, please?
I'd like it.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer, or Mr. Palmer, please. Mr. Parsons?
Yeah.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hall? Mr. Church? Thank you, okay, we're now in a closed session. Do y'all need a five-minute break? Or do you want to continue?
Yeah.
So we need five minutes of the clear room.
Yep, okay, so about roughly six-thirty at time, right?